I'd like to call this regular council work session and regular council meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and consider Republic of British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Tevez.
Here.
Ms. Colon.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Coleman. Ms. Anderson. Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Flackler, a caution this evening. Mr. Petrosi.
President.
Mr. Peaches.
Here. Before we get started, I want to turn this over to the mayor for a couple of minutes.
So I just wanted to take a minute to mention two people, two former Bristolians. The first is our former mayor, Joe Saxton, who the other day was one year of his passing. Just want to keep Joe's family and his memory going. Joe was a great mayor to this community and hope I'm making him proud since I was the one that preceded him after his death. The other is lifelong Bristolian, Joe Nelson, who just recently passed away. For those of you who knew Joe, he was a 30-year volunteer at Station 53, he was a 19-year captain, and when I found out from his obituary, he was the one that founded the first dive rescue team in Pennsylvania. So that was pretty amazing. I mean, I knew Joe, my father knew Joe, a lot of us sitting here knew Joe. He was, you know, what defined Bristol Borough. He loved the community, he loved the events, he loved the people, and most importantly, he loved his family. I'm personally gonna miss driving down Railroad Avenue and seeing Joe standing on his porch or leaning on the fence, just having a cigarette and waving and asking how the day's going. So I ask you to keep the Nelson family and Joe's memory in your prayers. And for those of you that like to pay your respects, everything will be at Wade Funeral Home next Monday to 17th, and his obituaries are posted on Wade Funeral site. So I ask that you keep Joe Nelson and his family in your memory and in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We also have a special presentation that Councilwoman Figueroa and Rodriguez wants to present to Carmen and her family. I don't know if you guys want them to come up here, or how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, they could come up here. Carmen, come on up.
Carmen, bring whoever you want up.
Yeah, you can bring your family up. Before we get started, I just want to say that I sat down with Ralph after me and Maria had talked about it, and Ralph, knowing the Ruiz family for as long as he has, we came together and said that we needed to honor Mr. Colon, who was the founder of Puerto Rican Day. In the past, we've had Latinos, Hispanics were Puerto Ricans. In this town, we're Puerto Ricans and proud of it. So I just wanted to say that. We have here something Maria put together. Here is Mr. Johnny Colon, and this is Mr. Neelis. I don't know if anybody remembers.
Yes.
But he used to be the tax collector for Bristol. And then we had the women here because if, in my day, back in the day, I was young, when we had Puerto Rican Day, it was always celebrated at the Grundy Park. And it wasn't something where people came and brought food and sold it. All the families would get together and cook because Johnny would bring food to everybody to cook. So if he didn't have the food to cook, he'd bring it to you to cook. And we'd have rice and beans and batiles and, you know, penne and all that good stuff.
And every, I want to say, and everything was free back then.
Yeah, everything was free. We got together, we partied, and he was determined to make sure that as the Puerto Ricans of Bristol, that we got to celebrate our heritage. And we did. So on that... A proclamation of Bristol Borough Council and Mayor, County of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing and commending Juan R. Colon, aka Johnny Colon, for his many years of service. Whereas Juan R. Colon, founder of Puerto Rican Day, served the residents of Bristol Borough with integrity and honor as the chairman of Puerto Rican Day Committee for many years. And whereas Juan R. Colon devoted much of his personal time and energy to the betterment and well-being of the residents of Bristol Borough. Whereas the Borough Council and Mayor desires to honor Juan R. Colon for his distinguished and extraordinary service for his residence of 50 years. 50 years! And not only has he done so much for us, but his beautiful daughter here has carried it on. She has been the leader of the Puerto Rican Culture Association. She's always worked out there, even if she's not the leader of the Puerto Rican Culture Association, and she's always made us proud. So now therefore, be it resolved by the Borough Council and Mayor of the Borough of Bristol, and it's hereby resolved by the authority of same, that Juan R. Colon is hereby honored and thanked for many years of dignified unselfishness and honorable service. And we thank you and your family, and thank you for everything you've done.
Say something?
Yes.
Give her a mic.
Yeah, give her a mic, please. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Bristol Borough Council for acknowledging my father with this tribute. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Well, I can tell you right now, and I told you this numerous times in the past, your father was a great guy, respected by everyone in this town. And at one time, if you weren't on the right side of your dad, you never won an election. Because I can tell you that right now. Because when my mom first ran, your dad supported her, and she won her election, and the way you support us.
Yes.
Your father's a great guy.
Yes, Carmen always supports us.
Please remember that.
Yes, always, always. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I apologize, but I'm looking at my notes, and sometimes I can't understand my own writing. But I also wanted to remember another Bristolian who passed away, who passed away in June, and that was Joe Kaufman. So for those of you who knew Joe Kaufman, he was a 26-year councilman in this borough. He was a Little League volunteer for decades on end, a lifelong goodwill hose volunteer at the fire company. And Joe, I believe, was involved with vesting our cops years ago. And when you wanted something done in the North Ward or something in the borough for a long time, you picked up the phone and called Joe, and he got it done. So I just wanted, you know, the people of Bristol to remember Joe Kaufman, and again, keep his family and friends in your prayers and your thoughts and prayers going forward. That's all.
I was going to mention Joe, but I knew he was on your paper. Joe sat here, I think, longer than anybody sitting in council. And like you said, I mean, if you wanted anything done without going to Joe in that North Ward, you never, you know, it never got done. But, you know, he'll be truly missed around town and very well-respected guy, and he put a lot of time into this borough, and did start the Vestacop. He was the first one that went out and raised all the money to get our police officers vests for the first time. So we had some great meetings with Joe that we all could remember. A lot of them we can't talk about on TV, but he was a great councilman. Okay. Okay, so before we get into council, everybody knows that there's been citations written about sidewalks. And to a point where a lot of people are upset because they have two weeks to get this done. I think the approach that we have taken maybe wasn't the right approach. I don't know. I met with our inspection department the other day with Mr. Dillon and our solicitor, and we talked about this. And I asked John to come tonight so he could explain to the people at home how this came about, why it came about, and explain to people that if you need time, the borough works with everybody. So a lot of people now are getting, I'm getting calls that I feel they're getting ripped off, that people are just trying to jack their prices up or call people because of this two-week thing, which isn't really true. So, John, I don't know if you want to go to the podium. Is it easier? Or whatever you prefer.
Okay, so on May 10th, the members of the inspection department went to a seminar, which was given by the, hosted by the Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs, and was actually taught by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, which dealt with sidewalk issues for design, maintenance, and safety. In the seminar, it was discovered that there were regulations that mandated federal American Disabilities Act, it talked about trip hazards. The trip hazards given by the federal government are quite strict. Anything more than a quarter inch of elevation between sidewalk blocks, bricks, is considered a trip hazard by the federal government under the American Disabilities Act. We get named, and I don't think people realize this, the borough gets named in a lot of lawsuits where there's trip and fall incidents on sidewalks, whether it be on private property or on public property. We still get named in it, we have to defend ourselves, and I'm sure sometimes, I think Mr. Dillon or this solicitor could answer that better, but there's settlements that we have to pay out, which costs the borough a lot of money. So starting May 12th, we began, did a sidewalk safety initiative, where we've gone out and we've done approximately 50% of the town already. There was 155 violations of this issue for 50% of the town. 132 of those people have either called us and asked for extensions, which we give, or they've abated the problem. There were 23 citations we had issued. When people receive something in the mail from us, they assume automatically it's a court action. It's a letter we sent, it's a violation notice, it has pictures on it. It describes what has to be done and gives people a chance to either call us or fix it. We encourage people to call us. That's the problem. People just ignore it, and then it takes, it forces us to go to the next step, which is a court action. I would say the majority of sidewalks here in the town require repair, not replacement. I mean, I don't know what kind, what the contractors are telling people, a lot of these contractors, but a lot of it really just requires repair. If you read the borough wardenses, we only have to give by borough ordinance five days' notice before we can commence action. Give at least two weeks, give people a chance to call us, work something out, give them extensions to get this work taken care of. So that's where we're at with this right now. There is money for people who are financially, who have financial hardships through the, I believe, the RDA, which they have money set aside for sidewalk maintenance and stuff as long as you're a homeowner. You can apply for the RDA funds, and I know they, it's a no-interest loan, and they tack it on the back end of the mortgage, where basically, if you sell your house, it's pay the RDA back, but it's a no-interest loan. So I know there's money available for that. We've been in discussions with Habitat for Humanity for some aid. So that's where we're at with it right now. I mean, it's not something we enjoy doing, but some of the sidewalks are pretty bad. We have been named in a lot of lawsuits, which causes the borough a lot.
So just so you know, and John, you don't need to replace your sidewalk. We would like it replaced, but if you ride around, I guess you see people in a, just in a bucket with some cement, and they're mixing it and they're just putting it on an angle, so when you're walking and you hit that block, you don't trip.
Correct.
That's 99% of the problem right now. And if people are in wheelchairs or people with walkers that are trying to go around and they hit these things and go flying, we get sued, whether it's our, it's not, we end up defending this at the end and we get out of it because the sidewalk is owned by the homeowner. But it's causing the borough a lot of money to defend these claims. But I think when we put this out that says two, God bless you, two weeks, you need to get this done, nobody looked to say any problems, call the borough. So if you call the borough, they give you time to work with you, and they'll get it done. So as president of the redevelopment authority also, and John said that, there is money available for anybody that fits a certain income that wants money for their sidewalk. And how it works, or whether it's for your exterior, your home, your roof, how it works is there's a lien put on your property, and it's interest-free, you never pay it back until you sell your house or you transfer your house. So you're basically, if you fall in this category, you can get your sidewalk replaced. If a porch has fallen down, if your roof needs to be redone, some people need a bathroom put, whatever. The RDA has funding out there for people to apply for this money. So there should be, there should be no reason that these things can't get resolved. Did we approach it maybe the wrong way? I would say yes. I think that the letter, the citation, everything that went out with two weeks, everybody went into panic mode. But I personally got cited for bricks on my sidewalk and my tree well where the sidewalk was lifted. I know Betty got cited, I think Greg got cited. So they, you know, it wasn't just certain people that got this. They're walking the streets, and if your sidewalk's up, they're citing you based on this recommendation from the American Disability Act.
And don't confuse the word citing. People assume that's automatic court action. It's not.
They do.
It's a violation notice. It's notice like, here, look, give us a shout, give us a call, so we can discuss this and get this squared away. We're looking for compliance, not fines.
Thank you.
So does anybody have any questions for John?
The only thing that I'm worried about is, like, giving people a short period of time. There's so many people that need the work, and there's not that many concrete, I mean, there are a lot of concrete people, but not enough to cover the whole area. So if they ask you for more time...
Oh, absolutely. Just don't ignore us. I mean, just don't ignore us.
Okay.
And I think once everybody knows, and hopefully this gets put out more, that they don't have to replace their sidewalk.
Right.
They have to correct the tripping problem. And for $5, you could buy a bag of cement, mortar mix, and just mix it up in a bucket and put it on your sidewalk, and it's solved.
The guy next door to me did that.
That's how easy it is.
He did that, and he did it right away. And I said to him, did you get a letter? He said, yeah, I did. I said, were you upset? He said, no, it needed to be done, and I did it. But he did it himself. He was able to do it himself. Some people can't. There's elderly people, women that don't get their hands dirty, you know?
And we understand that, that's why we're more than willing, but don't ignore us. Just call us.
Yeah.
You know, we can work something out, obviously.
All right. So, I don't know, John, do we send a letter to these people that are, you're in contact with everybody? Because I want to avoid going to court as much as we can.
Let's let it wait.
You know, I know we don't want to be there, but I'm saying, we got better things to do, and we're not worried about us defying. We, all we want to do is try to correct some of these problems.
Compliance, exactly.
Carmen, you want to, just go to that podium so we can hear you on TV.
I think the big issue here was that when the notices came out, a lot of the elderly, they didn't know that there were grants available to them. So therefore, they were very panicky. I've been helping about three people now with this issue. And when I explained to them about the grant, how you have to pay it back, a lien is put on your house, they're not happy about that. That's the issue we're having now. You can't...
Can you see that one on camera or on TV?
They can't hear you on TV.
They have to, we're near the mic.
Okay, so now the problem we're having is some of them don't speak English. So they're not aware of this. And I've been going to homes to help these people with it, but there's so much I can do. So I think a notice should have been sent in Spanish to them, letting them know that there are grants available, and that was not done.
So maybe we could send out something to everybody that's already been cited. Didn't we putting there something about the RDA?
No.
No.
Okay.
It's a hanger. Well, no, it's a...
And, you know, the RDA's not going to give you money if you don't qualify for it.
Exactly, you have to qualify.
And they're not just going to say, here, get your...
No, I am aware of that, because I did look at, Mr. Dillon gave me some information on that, and I'm aware of that. And I did explain that to them. But I really feel a letter should have been sent out to the elderly, explaining to them what the procedure is, and that wasn't done.
I said, we approached it the wrong way, in my opinion.
Exactly.
So we need to, going forward, we need to figure out how we're going to get this resolved. And I think it's simple, you know, letters.
Exactly, it's very simple.
Maybe a form from the RDA. If the letter has to be in Spanish, maybe she could come and translate it for us, or Maria or Betty can help out.
You tell them you're going to put a lien on your house. I bet we'll be worried too.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a lien. What it is is...
Well, they, they'll never give you money without trying, without securing it.
Right. You don't have to pay it until you sell your house.
And you're, and it's...
I'm aware of that, because I looked at it.
It's free.
But they didn't know that. I had to go and explain that to them.
But they'll never give you money without putting a lien.
Oh, absolutely, no, I know that. And then you sell your house, and they get the money back.
Yes. Okay, thank you. It's a good program, in my opinion.
So any more questions for John?
No.
John, thanks for coming.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anybody in the public have anything?
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Okay. Chief, we have.
Just a quick update. We're through the grant process for the e-bikes, the police e-bikes and the UTB. We should have them probably in the next two weeks, I'm hoping, so we have them for the rest of the summer and all the events. And we're in another phase, a wave of aggressive driving grant from now until the 20th of August. Please slow down and stop for the stop signs. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Nothing else.
Lorraine.
I just wanted to say, I used to live on Mansion Street, which is in the North Ward, and I knew Joe Kaufman very well. He lived across the alley from us.
I got it.
And he took pride in what he did for his ward. He loved his ward. And I just, you know, I wanted to say I was sorry to the family. Also, Joe Saxton, he was a great friend to us, he was a great friend to this town, and he is missed. And Joe Nelson and I were very close. We were good friends, and he helped me with every one of my campaigns. He used to bring me chocolate-covered strawberries that he made. He was a special man, and he was so good to his children. And I really feel bad for his children. And that's all I want to say.
Break.
I just want to reiterate, Joe also helped me in every one of my campaigns, and just a good man and cared about Bristol. And I was saddened to hear of his passing. I remember Joe Kaufman from being a little kid when my father was on council with him, and he was always a colorful figure, and he certainly will be, will be missed as well. Of course, Joe Saxton was a good family friend as well, as a great neighbor. So other than that, I think sidewalks and, you know, the road paving, if you have any questions about the road paving, you can certainly reach out to me or anyone else. But I think it's pretty clear what's going on, you know, we're going to fill those roads and pave those roads, and bear witness until it's finished. That's all I have.
Lorraine.
I actually just want to remind everyone that Hebaton Night is on Saturday, the 22nd, and the Puerto Rican Festival is the 29th. I'm sorry that this year would be the first year that I'm not going to be there. I will be away, so I will actually miss this year's event. And I actually, I have to say, I'm very proud. My mom was one of the women that cooked, and she's in that picture, along with my sister that had passed, my sister Alda, so I'm kind of...
Pudged.
Pudged, yes. And I also want to remind everyone, as far as the cleanup, we need to continue to clean up our area, you know, our yards and help our neighbors. If the neighbor needs help in cleaning up, we need to clean up. I see tons of comments on Facebook about rodent, everybody having a rodent issue, but part of taking care of that rodent problem is that we must clean up. We must keep our areas clean, you know, pick up the trash. And again, if your neighbor needs help, help your neighbor with the trash. So that's the principle. That's all I have.
Louis.
Yes, last month, I mentioned about the Bristol Borough students that were at the state championship, and when I saw my son the other, a couple of days later, I said, you know, I felt like I missed somebody. And he said, well, I missed your grandson.
[laughing]
I had two grandsons on that relay team, and I said, Aiden was a senior and Aiden was a sophomore. Andreas is the sophomore part of that relay team. So, but it's better to make a mistake on somebody in the family than...
That's right.
Than somebody else in town. Bob Marquis recently sent me a letter that the American Gaslighting Contest Award winner was the Grundy Foundation's South Lawn Project. This is a national, national competition, and the letters, it's the, it's the design and the design of a project, whether it's new or an existing facility, but I'm sure if you haven't noticed it, when you go by at night, you'll see the gas lamps lit in the, in the area and on the building. So again, congratulations to Marquis Construction Services and the Grundy Foundation for this fine project. And while I'm talking about that South Lawn Project, Tom Lawton and the Tesco Company that recently bought the Grundy Commons, Industrial Commons off of Fred Baumgartner, and Tom's the president and owner of Tesco, which is an electric testing meter, testing company. And they recently had their national sales meeting, actually, it was last night, they had, had it at the, at the Grundy Foundation. And it was nice to see that he's, he's supporting the borough in, in a lot of different ways. Tom lived here years ago, he was my neighbor when he first moved into Bristol, and he was a tenant at the Grundy Industrial Commons since then, and now, now he's the owner of that building, so I'm going to thank, thank Tom and the, and the Grundy Foundation also for all they've done for the town. That's it.
Betty.
I just want to say that going forward, July 10th is now Johnny Colon Day from now on in Bristol.
You got a day, a day named after him. Right, Mayor?
Works the lab.
Okay. I got a few things. One, we have a letter from the parade committee asking for a donation again, so the parade is on. Over the next couple of months, we'll discuss a donation for them. Christmas tree lighting, we still need a Christmas tree. I'm trying to think, that somebody told me they had a tree.
It was a big one.
And it was a big one.
It was a 30 footer.
I got to find out. Somebody called me and said, you still... Somebody called me and said, "You still need a tree?" I said, "Yeah." But if somebody knows anyone that has a tree, we'll go cut the tree down free, we'll clean up the stump and all, and take it to the borough. So we really need to look for a tree as soon as possible. The road program, Kurt, I don't know if you and Amanda want to talk about anything or... Excuse me.
I can just get a quick...
Go ahead.
As Mr. Pezza mentioned right there, they obviously began milling the roads. They should be complete with milling in the next day or so, and they will begin the base repair efforts on Pond Street likely on Thursday or Friday of this week. So please bear with us. There's going to be some minor inconvenience while they do that work. The contractors' paving crew is a little bit behind their milling operations at the moment, so it may be another week or two out before they start actually doing the asphalt overlay for the paving portion of it. But they should be complete within the next month or so.
Well, I could tell you right now, JDM is doing an outstanding job. They're enough, I mean, they come in, they get it done.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no joke about that firm, and we've been dealing with other companies because of the bid process. And we're fortunate enough that they won this bid, and I hope they win a lot more in the borough, so.
They're in a great...
All right. Any questions with Amanda? Thank you. All right. The last, two more things. I have one, the nets for the soccer program need to be replaced. We're thinking about trying to make them. They say you can't make them out of PVC anymore. They have to be made out of aluminum. So they have an idea that to buy six new sets, it's probably around $10,000 to buy six sets. So I'm going to ask council to put on the agenda tonight to make a motion to order these because soccer will be here in August before you know it, and we really need to move forward on getting these nets purchased and installed. Okay? Now, the last thing I have is news that I really didn't, I hope I had never had to give, but I was advised by our solicitor this evening that he no longer wants to continue his solicitorship. And he's, not that he's up in age, but he's at a point now where he wants to start traveling and doing some different things. So he likes to step down his solicitorship by the end of the year. So I would like to make a smooth transition to a new solicitorship, and he's willing to, whatever information, he'll be at every meeting, and we'll bring another solicitor in to sit here. We tried to talk to him. He just, you know, it's time. Right? So we discussed an executive session that we would like to bring in, which we're using right now for litigation and different things, is Begley, Carlin, and Mandio's firm, who has a firm that's big enough to handle anything we want to do. And we also have, Jeff Garten will be our solicitor, but we also have Brendan Corrigan, who's with them, that can come in when we, we need some things done, and they have, they have enough people to handle everything we want to do. So I'm asking council tonight to put on the agenda to hire that firm, and we'll discuss fees and all, but I want to start being able to give them documents that are personal, that our, we want to give our solicitor the authorization to start sharing, you know, any litigation or anything that's going on with them. So I think in the next five to six months, hopefully we're, they're right, built, they're right up to speed with everything, and it'll be a smooth transition. So we're going to miss you. We've been together, you've been, and Billy, for everybody's been in the boroughs. When my mom got elected, he was appointed to the zoning board, and he served 18 years or...
11 years. The planning commission, 18 years, so he served as a zoning board.
And served as a councilman and served as our solicitor. Served as a solicitor for the sewer authority, so I think it's been like 45 years.
Some way or another.
So he's been involved with borough, this borough. So we're going to miss you, and I wish we could talk you out of it, but I know it's not going to happen, so.
Do we have a party?
Huh? You do have a hard head. You do have a hard head.
She said, "Do we have a party?" Yeah, do we have a hard party for her?
December.
Yeah.
When he retires. Betty's making the cake.
I'm buying the cake, I...
So... Anything, John?
I'll buy it.
No.
Billy, you have anything?
Yeah. Yonkers, those two, suspended rules.
Suspend the rules and add the nets?
The nets.
And Begley, Carlin, and Mandio.
Right.
Pardon me?
Goals and nets.
Goals and nets.
We need the nets on the goals.
Yeah. All right. So that ends the first part of this workshop session. Anybody in the public have anything for public comment? That ends public comment. So we'll go into our voting. Anybody on council have anything, Mayor? Go into our voting portion of the meeting. So at this time, I need a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for June 12, 2023, accept the treasurer's report for May 2023, accept the fire chief's report for June of 2023, accept the inspection department report for June of 2023, accept the public works report for June of 2023, accept the police report for June of 2023, and accept the hard report for June of 2023.
Second by Maria. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three.
President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the applicant from Drift LLC to RSR LLC for Resolution 2023-1, by which council gave municipal approval for an economic development liquor license for 313 and 315 Mill Street.
Second by Betty. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now we need a motion to suspend the rules to add two things on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add the approval of purchasing soccer nets and goals to the agenda, as well as hiring Begley, Carlin for the transition for solicitorship.
Second by Betty. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So the first thing, grab the nets.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of soccer nets and goals for this coming soccer season.
Second by Maria. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to hire Begley, Carlin for the transition to our solicitorship.
And Mandio.
Begley, Carlin, and Mandio, sorry.
The firm.
The firm, yes.
What's the matter?
I'm second.
Oh, I thought you wanted to say something. Second by Lorraine. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else on the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Maria, meeting adjourned.